The open forum is an opportunity for any citizen to briefly address the Planning Commission on any matter that does not appear on the agenda. Comments are limited to no more than three minutes. Matters that appear to warrant commission consideration may be agendized for further discussion at a later meeting. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak during the open forum? Nancy, is there anyone on Zoom? Okay, thank you. So moving on to reports, are there any commissioners who wish to provide a report on any standing committees?
So I have a topic I just wanted to raise, and I don't know if I should have raised this during the open forum or if this is appropriate. But given the projects that we were working on this round, I think it would be helpful for us to work with staff to create an approach and framework to help commissioners make a more objective and informed decision around exceptions to total floor area and cut, fill, and off-haul. I think these come up quite often in our reviews, and I feel it's probably a good time to go back and look at what we've approved or the commissions have approved in the past and try and create some tools to help inform our decisions on a going forward basis. It wouldn't affect the two projects we have before us today. It would be work that we do on a going forward basis.
I think that's a great idea for consistency and transparency.
Great, thank you.
I have a report on the Housing Element Task Force. We are in the final stages of getting the third revision ready to bring to the Planning Commission Subcommittee and for review by the public. The Planning Commission Subcommittee meeting will be on October 30th at four o'clock.
Great, thank you. Does staff have any reports to provide?
No, thank you, Pat.
Thank you. So moving on to the consent calendar. The consent calendar consists of items that are considered to be non-controversial unless any item is specifically removed by any member of the council, staff, or public. The consent calendar will be adopted by one motion. Items removed will be considered in the sequence that they appear on the agenda. Would any members of the Planning Commission like to remove an item from the consent calendar? I have one correction on the minutes. Technically, two corrections. So for the design review and demolition permit motions, I voted yes. And then the rest are fine.
That's for 501 Center Falls.
Sorry, yeah, 501.
So the demo and the designer.
Page four, yeah. So design review and demo. Exactly, yeah, for the first two. And then just typo on the name, but that's not a big deal. Bottom of page four, yeah. Have you received any comments on any of the consent calendar items?
We have not, and I'm pulling up the Zoom. There's no one on Zoom that would like to pull an item.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to adopt the items as amended on the consent calendar?
I move to adopt the consent calendar with the minutes amended.
Can I get a second?
All in favor?
Okay, so moving on to the public hearing, I would like to open the public hearing for 443 Belvedere Avenue. And can you please provide a staff report?
Yes, thank you, Chair Johnson, and members of the Planning Commission. For your consideration this evening, is an application for design review, demolition, variance, and exception to total floor area to demolish a single-family dwelling and construct a new single-family dwelling at 443 Belvedere Avenue. The subject property is 24,000 square foot waterfront parcel on the western side of Elvedere Island. The site contains a single-family residence and mature landscaping, including 13 coastal live oak trees and a row of hedges on the left side yard. The project proposes to demolish the existing 4,289 square foot residence and construct a new three-level 6,008 square foot residence with an attached three-car garage. The garage would be set back three feet and 11 inches from the front property line, and the residence would be set back 10 feet and 17 feet from each side yard. The project proposes terraces on the second and third level, as well as a new ground-level patio, deck, and swimming pool. New exterior lighting and landscaping are proposed as well. From Belvedere Avenue, the proposed garage would appear 13 feet tall at street level. The pitch roof behind the garage would appear 16 feet tall from street level. The front would include a six-foot-tall black metal gate and fence as well. From the right elevation, the project proposes two two-foot-by-11-foot-six-inch windows at the third level and a four-foot-by-25-foot window at the stairwell between the third and second levels. On the left side of the residence, the project proposes two eight-foot-by-eight-foot windows and a on the third level and a two-foot-by-nine-foot-six-inch window on the second level. And facing the rear, the project proposes a series of glass windows and doors in various widths and lengths. The proposed colors and materials include a gray standing sea metal roof, cement plaster, and porcelain tile siding, aluminum windows and doors in a natural color, and board-form concrete retaining walls. The project includes a variety of new exterior lighting, including two wall sconces at the entrance, path lights along the entrance, left-side yard stairs, and ground-level patio. Recession lights will be beneath the roof overhangs and terraces, and there will be swimming pool lights as well. The plans currently show LED strip lights, which will be removed from the project scope. The project includes a variety of new landscaping. At the front of the property, the project would plant camellia, geranium, and three crepe myrtle to seven feet tall. On the right side yard, the project includes two coastal live oaks and one strawberry tree, which will be planted in 36-inch boxes, as well as coffee berry and lilac. At the rear, the project would include coffee berry, deer grass, monkey flower, lilac, and two lemon trees on the first-level terrace. And on the left side yard, the project includes one crepe myrtle, Mexican sage, and California The project site contains 13 coastal live oak trees. The project would preserve and protect four of these oaks and remove nine. The applicant did send us some revisions that he will be sharing with you all during his presentation. The applicant requests a variance to exceed the 28-foot height limitation within the first 40 feet from the street line. Circled in red, the shaded portion of roof measures 30 feet and eight inches tall. The granting of a variance is appropriate only if the criteria under Municipal Code Section 1984-010 can be met. First, the granting of a variance will not constitute a special privilege inconsistent with the limitations upon other properties in the vicinity. Second, there are special circumstances applicable to the property which would deprive the property of privileges enjoyed by other properties if the strict application of the zoning ordinance were applied. And third, the granting of the variance will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare or injurious to the property or owners of other premises. Here, staff finds that granting of the variance will not constitute a special privilege because other residences have been granted variances to exceed the height limitation on Belvedere Island. These include 455 Belvedere, 350 Beach Road, and 339 Golden Gate Avenue. Special circumstances are applicable to the property as well. The steep terrain of the lot constitutes a special circumstance, particularly within the first 40 feet of the property line where the slope exceeds 75%. The subject property is one of the steepest sloping lots on Belvedere Island, and constructing the residence lower into the hillside to meet the 28-foot height requirement would be difficult due to the excessive grading that would be required. Due to this special circumstance, conforming to the zoning ordinance places an undue burden on the property owners. The applicant requests an exception to total floor area to allow a 6,008 square foot residence where the maximum 4,850 square foot is permitted in the R15 zone. In order to grant the exception, the Planning Commission must be able to make each of the following findings. These include that primary views will not be significantly impaired. There are unusual circumstances applicable to the parcel which minimize the impact of the greater floor area. That the structure is appropriate in mass bulk and character of the neighborhood. And that the additional square footage will not substantially reduce privacy on adjoining Here, staff recommends the findings can be made. Primary views from the adjacent properties will not be impaired as the subject property is oriented out of the adjacent neighbors' line of sight. Views from the uphill neighbors will not be impaired as the residence is set back over 90 feet and between 23 and 47 feet above the subject property's roof line. The steep slope is an unusual characteristic which minimizes the impact of the greater floor area. Because of the steep slope, the house will be placed at the upper portion of the property and cut into the hillside, minimizing the impact on adjacent neighbors who are situated down slope. Additionally, the steep slope minimizes the buildable area available, and as a result, the floor areas, floor levels are set directly atop one another, making the building's footprint smaller than most in the vicinity. The residence is also appropriate in mass bulk and character for the neighborhood, which consists of three-level single-family dwellings between 7,000 and 14,000 square feet. Additionally, the project does not substantially reduce privacy of adjoining properties. On the left side, the two, the second and third level windows will be screened by dense hedges along the side property line. And on the right side, the adjacent property has one stairwell window facing 443 Belvedere Avenue, which should not substantially reduce privacy. Staff has received two letters regarding the proposed projects. Comments have centered around view obstructions from Park Lane due to the height of the proposed roof line. The project would be exempt from CEQA. And as detailed in the resolution, staff finds the project complies with the zoning ordinance and general plan policies and recommends the Planning Commission adopt the resolution granting the associated entitlements. Thank you, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the staff from members of the commission?
I have one. So on the fire report, both for this property and the next one, they're stating that we're in a wooey. And we're not. And I know Brian has said in his report we're not, but that's a document that I think should, we should get some kind of documentation from the fire department that correcting that, saying that we're in a wooey, just because it is a matter of public record and it could become detrimental in the future.
I emailed Tiburon Fire asking them to send us that, and I'm wanting to hear back from them.
Thank you.
I have a question. When I walked Park Lane today, there's a area that has some spray paint and a little bar that says seat height. Is that the proposed location of the bench? And did the city install that, or who installed that?
Yeah, Anthony Boyd, Tony Boyd, Director of Public Works, went up and installed the sort of mock-up. It's not 100% accurate. However, after we met with the applicant and the architect and received some emails and letters from neighbors or people on Parks Open Space Lines Committee, we've been working with the architect and homeowner to revise those plans that were approved and just pushing that bench up the hill three feet so the seat is raised 19 inches. And those are, that's on the dais. It was one of the late emails I sent you today. I'm sure the architect will get into it. So what you're seeing out there is what was approved, but depending on what happens tonight, there's a possibility of that bench moving up the hill and the seat raising 19 inches to help with the view.
And I just wanted to confirm, and I think it's helpful for everyone to hear maybe again, Sammy, is that so from the street, the highest point is 16 feet? From the lowest point of the grade on the street to the highest point of the roof is 16 feet?
That's correct.
Thank you.
And Sammy, I note that you didn't make any reference in your report to the giant fir tree that's on the property. But I understand from speaking to the homeowner and to the architect that that tree is going to remain. Yes, the cypress, fir, cypress, sorry. Yes, the massive, amazing, majestic tree, yes.
Staying.
Thank you. And this is just more of a process question, anything else? I noticed the reviewing architect's report from a month ago now noticed some deficiencies isn't the right word, but some incompleteness around, he advised that there should be a geotech report, some sort of structural review of the existing retaining walls and so forth. So me being a newbie, what do I make of that as a commissioner? Is that something that you guys then ask of the applicant? What does that, how does that impact what we're trying to decide up here tonight?
I think the consulting architect should look at the design review findings. I meant to actually reach out to him. We don't typically weigh in on geotechnical reports at this stage in the process, and it's always something that is carefully vetted and reviewed at the time of the building permit. So I think it's just sort of a communication error between us and Mark. It's not something typically that's in those reports.
And they also did get a structural engineer to look at the retaining wall to say that it was sufficient, right? Because that was in the staff report, correct?
That's correct.
Are there any more questions?
One more question. I apologize if I missed it in the report, but is there anything special noted about the tree protection plan for that cypress? Or is there just general measures of care?
I'd have to look at it again. Perhaps the architect can help answer that.
That would be great, thank you.
Are there any more questions for staff? Now I would like to invite the applicant to come up and speak about their project.
Good evening, Chair Johnson, members of the commission. My name is Antonio Castellucci, the project owner. Would like to mention some background about us. My wife Rita, which is with us here tonight, and I moved to Marin in 1980. We also raised our three beautiful children here. I was, I served as trustee for Dominican University for many years, has been part of this beautiful community. We've been here for, since 1980, a long, long time. Our youngest daughter Angela is here tonight with us as well, and all attended Marin schools. For the past 19 years, we've been living in Tiburon and Belvedere and absolutely love it here. 12 years ago, we purchased 14 Pelican Pond Road, and with the help of our local and talented David Thompson, architect, we built a beautiful new home and live there presently. Three years ago, we purchased 441, 443 Belvedere Avenue. And as you know, it's a very special property. With intention of building two homes, 441 will be sold and 443 will be our forever 443 will allow our family of three children and seven grandchildren to have space indoor and outdoor, as well as swimming pool that we do not presently have, not to mention one of the best views on the island. In addition, the home will have an elevator that I think will be very welcome as we get older. Another important factor is the ADU, which will be very helpful for caretakers should we require one at a future time. About one year ago, we asked David Thompson to get on board and together start designing these homes. Because of David's experience in Belvedere and our love for the island, we wanted to design homes that would blend in not only with parcel itself, but also take in consideration the surrounding homes, and most important, preserving as many trees as possible and preserving the privacy of adjacent homes is so important to us as well. And I believe that we have achieved that. Have to mention that working with Rebecca, Sammy have been a delight. Their cooperation helped us immensely toward achieving these fabulous design homes. Also must mention, working with Tony from Public Works was very productive the last couple of days. Together, we were able to smartly resolve street parking issues that we had and the park lane revised bench location in order to preserve those views. Finally, we are very proud and excited to present this project to you this evening and hope that you, at the end of the presentation, will be as excited that we are. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Johnson and members of the commission. My name is David Thompson. I'm the architect for the proposed new residence at 443 Belvedere Avenue. And I would like to thank you for your time and effort in reviewing these projects, as well as the meeting with us this weekend. As you know from Antonio's comments, he is building his forever home where he and Rita and their family can live comfortably while enjoying the company of the family. After meeting with you this weekend. So after meeting with you this weekend and the various reports from planning staff, Hey. Yeah, okay, yeah, great, thank you. So after meeting with you this weekend, the various reports from the planning staff, the architectural consultant, Sammy's presentation this evening, I feel that you have a good grasp on the proposed project, design features, materials, site qualities, et cetera. I also feel that the staff report, the architect, architectural consultants' report have accurately addressed the height variance and floor area exceptions. I would like to address a few items that have been revised since the staff report as a result of site meetings with the commissioners, Department of Public Works, and planning staff, as well as concerns expressed regarding the proposed project on Park Lane, as these seem to be the main concerns regarding the project. And just to start with, yes, the cypress tree is staying. Officially, it's located next door on 441. The arborist has addressed measures of protection in his report, as well as in the near future, he's going to tend to some issues with some pruning, as well as fertilizing and stuff that he thinks should be done soon. So the issue regarding the removal of trees. Bear with me a second. Sorry, I'm not quite as organized as Sammy. Okay. So after meeting, as I said, with the commissioners onsite and looking at some areas where maybe there's some slight modifications that could be made to the project to save some trees. So we looked at that further, and we determined these trees down in here, by shifting the swimming pool towards the west and moving back uphill portions of the terrace in here, we can, we can save those trees there and are happy to do that and have made the revisions on that. There is another oak tree over here that originally we were going to remove, and we've put that on a preserve and protect plan. So we've, of the nine that were going to be removed, we've added four back now. So we are now down to five removing on this lot. And we've also added, this is a change I'll discuss a little bit later, but by little change we made in the way we build this portion of the terrace area here, we're able to actually plant a tree in here as well. We didn't want to do too many because it starts to block the view, but this corner over in here, we've added another tree there. So just to comment now, between the two lots, I know we're talking about one in particular now, but between the two properties, there's 23 trees now that are scheduled for removal, and we're going to propose that 38 are being added. So the landscape architect just returned from vacation this morning, so he wasn't really able to make any modifications to his. plans, but they will get implemented as we move forward. And then we would also propose that if the commission felt that additional planting below the pool and the retaining wall. If they felt like that could offer something to the project, we're certainly happy to entertain that and discuss some options there. Regarding the grading. So that one change we did make is initially this terrorist deck area was all going to be framed above grade, supported by steel columns down, down, down the hill. So what we've looked at doing, which I think in the end is a better and nicer solution for a lot of reasons, is continue the wall of the pool, the downhill wall of the pool under the terrace. And then you return it back till it hits grade and then we can add more fill in that area approximately fifty-two cubic yards. So we can reduce our, our off-haul by fifty-two cubic yards by doing that. And we also, yeah, like I say, we can eliminate those steel columns and the grade beam piers and all that would support those that were on the outer edge by this point now we can cantilever since that overhang is seven feet or so, we can cantilever that portion of the deck out over and kind of clean up that, that condition down there. And I think it's a more interesting solution. And that would look something. So here now you see the wall kind of continues underneath that, the deck cantilevers out over that. You can see there it is sticking out there and then once again here, we still maintain a little, the, the utility stair access across and we'll have our pool equipment down under there. And so, you know, we do have planting all along here and it's not real tall planting, but you know, we can entertain some options there. So I think just to mention that, you know, we see these projects a bit of kind of, you know, hand in hand and by it's that between the two projects at four forty-three and forty, forty-one, the total off-haul will be around two hundred and fifty cubic yards, which averages a hundred and twenty-five yards per lot, which I think is a pretty reasonable number for a hillside project. So exterior lighting. So based on feedback from the commissioners, we've done some revision through the lighting plan. Sammy spoke to some of it, mostly eliminating the strip lighting. But we also reduced quite a bit, the number of recess cans that are in the, the overhang roof element and the the terraces that overhang the spaces below. So I think maybe ten lights or so we've, we've removed there. We also removed two lights from the swimming pool to address that a little bit. And then the last item was the original lights that we had that were washing down the walls of our interior courtyard here. They were adjustable wall washers that could be aimed up, down. So we've replaced those with a fixture that is just a fixed down light. So there's eliminates the possibility of shining it up. So regarding Park Lane. Let me, I need to. Yeah, it's a different file. So we met with the planning staff and DPW staff at the site on, on yesterday morning to discuss the proposed bench and viewing area on Park Lane. And based on the current mocked up bench that was referenced earlier, the Golden Gate Bridge is not obstructed by the proposed ridge. However, the water in the foreground is a little bit of water below the bridge you see. But the rest is, is obscured. So Tony Boyd, the Public Works Director, shared the proposed plans with me. So I could review and comment on it. And after reviewing the plans, I, I, it is possible to move the bench up the hill approximately three feet, which is the equivalent of three, you know, three steps. And by doing that, and we're able to raise that bench height by nineteen inches, which will make a significant impact on how much of that water now is captured in, in below the Golden Gate Bridge. And it really has, at least in my opinion, a pretty minor impact on the, on the design. That's, so here on the left is the current design. And what I think could be done is you, essentially you, you peel the bench off of a stair like three risers uphill, which is, that's the nineteen, approximately nineteen inches. And then you add those risers down below the landing. So it's, and the rest of everything above that stays the same, everything below that stays the same. It's really the same size of landing. The bench actually maybe gets a little bit longer. And the relationship of the landing level to the surrounding grades is, is very similar as, as well. So I, I think it's a pretty valid solution and, and you may even get a little more expansive views as you get a little bit higher, you might see better, a little more off to the left. You get out of this tree right here, which is currently really right in front of you. I know they're planning on pruning it some, which will help. But I think, you know, in the end, there might be some benefits of actually raising it a little bit. And furthermore, Antonio, the Castellucci, he has confirmed with Tony Boyd that he would cover the cost for any additional revisions for the landscape architect, structural engineer, et cetera, to modify their plans to, you know, reflect a revised design if, if we move forward with that. Also, I think it's important to note that the ridge in question that is within the height limit and it's not the reason for the height variance request. Sammy pointed out the small portion of the lower section of the gabled roof, which amounts to forty-five square feet or one point four, five percent of the roof area that is exceeding this twenty-eight foot height limit. The other thing I just guess I would mention is that so that, that said, there's really, the variance has no impact on the view from the bench. The new proposed residence is only like seven feet, three inches longer than the existing house. And that's moving towards the east end of the house. And a lot of that extension is blocked from the view from the bench by existing vegetation. And I, I say that because there was concern expressed in a letter to the commission that exemption to the floor area exception contributes to the impact on the view from the viewing area, which I, I think is really a push. So in a nutshell, we feel strongly that there is a reasonable solution that can work for all the parties without significant modifications to either proposal. Rebecca, I need to go back to.
I think you're over time. They're being generous.
Nancy, how much over are we? It's just to be fair to other. There's two, two things I'll just quickly I think are important because regarding the concerns that the architectural consultant mentioned, you know, we, we addressed the existing retaining wall and with the structural engineer. The issues of the geotechnical and civil engineering, you know, although not required at this time, you know, it's not something that we just overlook. You know, the fact there's been a house on this site for over sixty years, no evidence of soil or civil issues. Fact that there are homes built on adjacent or next to adjacent properties which have geotechnical reports that, that I've looked at, you know, contribute to the buildability of this project. You know, not to say it's easy, but we do it all the time. Last, I'd like to say that it's a great benefit in doing these two projects together. First, the impact on the neighborhood will be reduced as the construction time is shorter than it would be if one project is built than the next. And by having the two lots to stage all the construction equipment, excavation, et cetera, it's a, it's a huge positive. You know, the, our plan is to first build these downhill lower retaining walls, which will recruit, create a large flat area for staging and, and work. And at this point, we probably won't even excavate the pool. We'll keep that as filled until we're through with all the foundations and earthwork and then come back and excavate the pool. And then, once we remove the existing house at four forty-three, we can create a, a reasonable flat area off the street up there to stage dump trucks and concrete trucks. So I think they can be probably completely off the road up there. So yeah, Antonio and his family are super excited about building their new home and we're hoping the commission can support the project as presented. And thanks again. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant from members of the commission? Yeah, please go ahead.
Hi, I just, I've got, I've got one question about, about the lane. As you know, I took, I took pictures when I, when I, when I visited, visited this weekend. I'm very happy to know that the, the increase, the increase in height will, will lead, and if you want to see my, see my pictures of the before and after the, the height change. But my, my one question about the revision to the lane, the lane benches, there's been some, and one of the reasons why the lane bench has been delayed is the PG&E trench that's there. Have you, do, do you know whether or not there, the revisions to the, the lane bench as proposed would cause any issues with the PG&E trench?
Yeah, I, I looked at that as well. Anthony Boyd sent me actually the structural engineering drawings as well. And I think on some level, without obviously discussing it with the engineer, I, I think it's actually going to be better because of the way, the angle that those, the, the utility lines kind of come through, he's got three piers there. And because of where the utility line is, two of them are kind of close together, like four feet apart. And the other one's spread out quite a bit more. But when you move that uphill a little bit more, the way the angle comes through it lets you spread that middle pier out to be more centered between the other two, which is kind of a, a plus.
I just wanted to make sure that you, that you had taken that into account because it is, has been such a, such a hurdle for the, for the product, for the project.
Correct.
And then my, my second question is the utility stairs that go down, as, as I'm looking at the plans on the right of the, of the project between, between the, the project and the, and the existing house, which is just sort of down the, down the hill. Are those lights on those utilities stairs, are they going to be screened by vegetation or trees or fence or anything of that nature?
Well, yeah, there's a lot of there's, there's a lot of planting.
Because, because some of, some of the planting that was indicated over there looks, looked fairly low. That's why I asked.
Well, yeah, so you have all, all the plantings along there and the lights that are, and then you have a dense hedge existing there. And then you have a six-foot high fence and then it's fenced up here at the street.
So the head, the hedge will be remaining then?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. And those lights are, are low level landscape downlights.
Okay, thank you.
Could I ask another question about the trees? I think the, the plan seems clear that it does. Want to make sure that the tree is protected, but I might ask that it be more thoroughly done than indicated in the plan. It sounds like in the plan that it's requiring the protection to be purely around the excavation area, but I'm sure it will be handled perfectly. I just would want to sort of reinforce that point of, of making sure that the tree is well taken care of.
Agreed.
To clarify, I think that could be a condition of approval. Are there any other questions, the applicant? Yeah, please.
While we're on trees, tell me about forty-nine and fifty-two and why they need to be removed. Let me see which trees those are. There are two oaks on the, between I think four, four, five and four, four, three maybe.
These, these two trees.
Forty-nine, fifty-two, yeah. I know, they're hard to read, to read the numbers.
Yeah. Well, I don't know if you recall when you walked through there, but the, the trees, they, they basically, you know, they're not straight up. They lean well into, into the building footprint. One of them especially, I think it's the it was looking, we looked at that on Sunday and I think to, to save the tree and get it out of the, the building, out of the the tree area, we'd have to move it close to twenty feet. Shift it twenty feet to the right. So this wall right here would need to move pretty significantly that direction. So yeah, it's, it's.
And that's true of both, both of those trees?
Yes, that's. I don't know Billy, if you have any. It leaned the wrong direction.
Okay. And then.
Sorry, just really quick before we move on from those two trees, was there any consideration? Sorry, just really quick before we move on from those two trees, was there any consideration around just pulling in the the footprint of the home a little bit to accommodate for those two?
Well, yeah, we we studied the proper placement of the building and, you know, you move it you know, towards the west and it impacts the other big tree over there and just based on the existing structure that's there and the foundation. It it seemed the right spot to place the building, keeping a little more space between 441 and and 443 is good also for the health of the big Cypress tree. So so, yeah, I think that there's lots of considerations that went into placing the building where it is.
While we're still on trees is, so you were saying 23 removed, 38 will be added. Do you have a sense or count of how many of those are oaks? How many oaks are removed and how many oaks are added?
Majority of them being removed are oaks. There's a few on 441 that aren't, but I'd say 90, 80, 90% are oaks. Because, you know, once you have oaks, you can't really plant much under it and 441 is pretty much just an oak forest there. We are, I'd have to go back and look at the count for how many we're adding. Two oaks on 443. Okay.
So removing 20, 20 and adding two.
Well, there's no, there's more on fourth. 14 oaks.
Between the two properties.
Can we just talk about 443 and not bring up 441? Because I think it's very confusing on this tree count thing.
Sure. So could you give us a comp for 441?
Yeah.
443, I'm sorry. So how many removed, how many added?
Removing five trees and we are adding. Blow it up to see. Adding 14.
And two of those 14 are oaks.
Two of those 14 are oaks. Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then I had a question about the skylights. Because we we brought this up when we were on site is just the concern about light pollution for upward hill neighbors who are used to looking out towards the bay and the city and so forth, where they're seeing darkness. Now they'll have, you know, three potentially uplights that would certainly affect the ambient light of of the neighborhood. I mean, it's a westward facing building that gets an abundance of light. I'm just wondering, how necessary are they? Like, from a lighting standpoint, are they required or is more just for?
I would, I would say that this one over here is important. It's in the kitchen, yeah, getting light back there. But yeah, I mean, I think if if that's a, you know, a serious concern, we could, we could probably delete those without having a you know, serious impact on the one here and the kind of entry is 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 nice. I mean, but you know, I wouldn't consider that a deal breaker.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And in the the city's architectural report, there are a couple of things. I think you said you addressed most of those. One of the things he raised, and I believe you showed us the material, but he was questioning about, you know, we should just make sure the finish for the exterior cladding was not going to be too reflective. And isn't it honed? I think you showed it to us. Thank you. Great, thank you. I'm passing back forth. And then the last question is, he also raised, should there be a consideration for trash enclosures?
So we have kind of the storage area behind our fence right here, just where the there's there's where the trash is kept on this property.
So it'll be behind a gate or?
Behind the gate.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, thank you.
I have some questions. First, I wanted to ask, we've been talking about cut. Is there going to be any fill brought in on 443?
Hopefully not. Yeah, there'll be some like base gravel to put under slab on grade, but no dirt.
Okay. And then from what you described, the two houses are going to be sort of built at the same time to try and reduce the impact on the neighbors and trucks and all of that. That's correct?
That's that's our goal. Yes. I mean, it benefits us on a lot of levels.
And what is the height of the wall washing lights in the front? At what height are you putting those wall washer?
So let me go to a drawing here. So if if you see this, this is the our exterior sunken courtyard here. We would put those lights mounted up near the top of the wall, just so they give some drama to to light that wall from above. Now, nobody's, nobody can see that from off site.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And then the final question I had is, is then when you change the design of the deck so that it's not on the post and you're going to be cantilevering part of the deck because it's cantilevered, does that affect the square footage on the house? Since it's cantilevered?
No.
Greater than 15 feet in height, 50% of them are counted towards lot coverage, but not floor area.
Not for floor air because it was a covered space and now it's going to be at grade.
There's no floor under it, though.
Okay.
So it doesn't count towards.
All right. Okay, that's all the questions I had.
I have a question just kind of while we're on that corner of the property. So on page A 2.2. Just want to clarify. So it's showing the the portion of the deck that changed there. And this may have changed because of the revision you did, but it's showing, it's showing it in the setback here, the side yard setback. We had talked about. You can have a structure up to four feet, but you've got the deck. Then on top of that, you've got the railing, which adds another more height. And then a portion of the outdoor kitchen is also in the in the setback. So does does the railing height add to the, no, so it doesn't count towards? Okay.
Yeah, plus the kitchen area and all that, there's a, there's a four foot retaining wall right, right there. So it's actually sunken below grade. And then because of the way the site slopes, when you get to this point right there, that is four feet above grade. So top of wall, 132, bottom of wall, 128. And then as the stair goes down here, a portion of it's in the setback, but that is is also below four feet. Its entire length down.
Okay, so the railings don't do anything? Thank you. Are there other questions for the applicant? None? Okay. Are there any questions for the applicant from members of the public? Yes, please. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Marika Bergson, owner of Five Edge Water. My husband and I submitted the letter to you today. Thank you to Chairwoman Johnson, as well as the member, the rest of the commission for this moment. I wanted to first of all, thank all of the city staff and the commissioners and definitely the applicant and homeowner for the work they did to take a look at what was going on with Park Lane, which was absolutely one of our primary concerns and find, I think, a solution that hopefully will be a benefit for everyone, which is really greatly appreciated. I also, though, did still want to sort of make a little bit of a point that I did raise in my letter that was kind of apart from Park Lane. And so I want to, I mean, my letter definitely focused specifically on that, but I also mentioned just questions and concerns about when we grant variances and exceptions to FAR and sort of a question I that I put to this commission and to our city staff in general, which is, we have zoning ordinances for a reason. And I think it is important that we keep that in mind because they're there to sort of protect everyone and create a fair and equitable approach. That's why they're put there. I happen to live on the lagoon. There and there are many people on the lagoon who would like, you know, more space, higher ceilings, et cetera. But they can't do that because there are restrictions that the city has adopted around height and that they were done for the greater sort of good of of the city. And at some point, a bright line has to be made. So both the state and the cities require that that requests for variance and exceptions are looked at very strictly and very critically. And it's done to be sure that they're all being applied fairly. And when someone purchases a property, when I purchased a property on the lagoon, actually, I could have built a higher place than I can now, but FEMA came in and changed it. But when people purchase it, they purchase it knowing what the zoning ordinance is required. And so today we're talking in particular, I I don't know exactly the plans, but we are looking at trees that are being removed because the building envelope is wide. So I just want to mention that again, and it's not particular to this applicant. The home is beautiful. I want them to have their forever home, but I think it's very important that the commission look at those questions when they look or face with a request for a variance and an exception. Thank you.
Thank you. If anyone else from the public would like to comment? Is there anyone on Zoom?
There's no one on Zoom with their hand raised.
Okay, thank you. So I will close public comment. And I will bring it back to the commission for discussion. Kevin, would you please start us off tonight?
Thank you, and thank you for the community feedback. Thank you for the applicant sharing your context and this being your forever home and for from the architect in terms of the thinking behind the project. I spent time with the plans. I've spent time with staff and I actually spent time with the applicant on site. And overall, I I'm very impressed that it's a, it's a very thoughtful project. It's a very ambitious project. I think we would all acknowledge that it's it's ultimately going to be a very large home. But that's not unusual for the neighborhood, or at least the immediately surrounding neighborhood. I think there's an 8,000 square foot home to one side, a 15,000 square foot home to the other. We just recently approved a home that's going to be well over five. There's one around the corner at six. So I think in the context of the neighborhood, these don't seem to be you know, that unusual. I mean, maybe on the upper end, but certainly not an outlier, at least as I see it. So you know, from an exception to total area floor area, I I can get comfortable with that. Although to your point, Marika, I think we discussed this before you joined today is we suggested that we, as a commission endeavor to find an approach and framework that's a bit more objective, so we can evaluate these things with a more informed point of view going forward and use some data to help guide us. So we understand, you know, what is within the appropriate range and what's not for different parts of of Belvedere. But back to this project, so for that I can definitely get comfortable. I can also get comfortable with the variance. Although I don't like variances, I think they should be used sparingly. I do think that when we go through our process and look at the four criteria, I can get comfortable with all four that this particular project meets it, but mainly for the reason that it's a very small part, I think you said 45 square feet, that actually falls outside of the requirement. And it's really more about the downward slope of the lot that pushes it above the 28 foot requirement versus when you're standing at street. That's why I asked Sammy to reinforce at street level. The the house is only seen or perceived to be 16 feet high, which seems very appropriate. So I can get comfortable with that as well. I would say, you know, my couple of issues is I hate to see the oaks go. I understand 49 and 52, I think it was. If they're leaning in the wrong direction, I'd ask you to consider potentially replacing those oaks with oaks. I mean, oaks are a beautiful type of tree that, you know, I think are beloved in in Belvedere, and it would be nice to see some of the replacements. I think you're removing five and adding 14 with two being oaks. Maybe you can find a way of adding a couple more oaks. So the oaks don't feel so lonely. That would be wonderful. Although I do appreciate you finding a way to bring four of those trees back from what you had originally planned. I also wanted to say my opinion, and I will see what the other commissioners have to say. The skylights, I I would like to see them go or to be managed in a way that doesn't create light pollution. Having lived here long enough, I know it's it's a beautiful community because we don't have a lot of ambient light at night or no streetlights. And it just makes the outlooks really special. And the more uplighting we add throughout the community, just slowly chips away at that special experience. So I'd like to see those go ultimately, in my opinion. I'd ask that we condition the project with engaging in our brist to monitor all the trees to remain all the trees that are to remain and provide additional protection measures as needed, which I don't think should be too tricky, although I think to the point Justin made, I mean, the Cypress is, I think, what we all want to make sure makes it through this 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 project because it's such an iconic tree within the neighborhood. And then finally, I wanted to say thank you for the adjustments that you made to Park Lane. The bench, I do think that that 19 inches will make a big difference. We were there today, Ashley and I, and and tried to figure out, you know, what the view would be like, but that will make a meaningful difference. And I think restore what was going to be a beautiful view. And, yeah, and I said, lastly, I just, I think, you know, in some respects, I feel like you're a model applicant and that you're willing to take feedback. I mean, you very quickly responded to feedback that you got from multiple commissioners and came back with revisions. And so we appreciate that very much. I do.
Thank you. Pat.
Hi, yes, thank you. So I read the report, visited the site with the property owner and the architect. I also had an opportunity to meet with the neighbor at 425 Belvedere this this afternoon, Mr. Conway, and assured him that we had received an email that you would address all his concerns with trees, and he was quite happy. I explained to him his concern regarding the garage height. I explained to him it was because of oh, that's 441. Oh, that's 441. All right, wrong house. Okay, forget all that.
It's they're they're very similar.
They're so hard. Yeah. Which one are we talking about? Okay, so we're talking around the park lane. Yeah, one of the right. So anyway, Mr. Conway did appreciate that. So I actually visited both sites, but I visited 443 and I appreciate that you took the suggestion to modify the terrace in order to save some of the oak trees. And I appreciate that you also worked on cutting down on the the cut from the property. I think the design is attractive. It's just enough different from neighboring.
It's just enough different from neighboring homes that it definitely will have a custom home feel to it, which it is. I can make all the findings for design review, demolition, the variance, and the total floor In addition, I would like to condition it, though, with one thing that I haven't seen on the drawing, and it can be on the final landscape plan, is just a drawing of the hogwire fence that you're going to be putting there, just so that we all know what it's supposed to look like. And then also, I think the community will appreciate that you are replacing two parking spaces with four.
No? That's 441.
Oh, that's for 441. We'll save that for next one. They just run all together. So, but I think in response to Ms. Bergson's comment about variances and exceptions, this commission, one of their hardest jobs is balancing the needs and wants of the applicant and the needs and wants of the community, and trying to find that balance that makes everyone happy. And I think this is a perfect example where the applicant is not only willing to use his resources and his money to make the Park Lane new bench, not lose as much view. And I think what he's giving back to the community is a big give back that gives, is giving more to the community than what he's getting. So, and that's the kind of thing that we have to balance on the planning commission, is that kind of give and take between the community and the applicant. So with that being said, for 443 Belvedere, I can make all the findings.
Thank you. Jenna?
So I, too, want to thank Mr. Castellucci for his thoughtful design, not only in the design of the house, but also the design of how the house will fit within the landscape, within the very steeply sloped property, and also within the neighborhood. With respect to the total floor area, I think that the slope, I think you said it was 76% grade at some point, which seems outrageous, is definitely an unusual condition, that speaks directly to one of the findings. I think it also will not have any impact on the views or the privacy of any of the other neighbors, given that it is built down the hill. And I will say it again, we don't really care what the people in Sausalito look at. And I also really appreciate that you've thought a lot about how to accommodate the not-quite-yet-built bench at Park Lane, and how the new house will affect not only the views from neighboring houses, but also the views from Park Lane, which the entire community uses. And so for the floor area, I can definitely make all of the findings. With respect to design review and demolition, I don't think I have to go through the various criteria, and I can make all of the findings there as well. And with respect to the variance, I'll echo what Pat just said, in the sense that, you know, Belvedere has a number of different neighborhoods within our community. As Marika pointed out, the lagoon houses have a very different feel and relationship to their neighbors, as do the houses at, you know, at the very tip of the island where this property is located. You know, it was referenced that there is a very large house next door and an even larger house on the other side of the property. I also think that in terms of granting the variance for the height, this would not be granting a special privilege, and it would not be detrimental to that community. I completely agree that were this variance being considered in another part of the island, we would have a different consideration and a different set of facts and different impact upon the neighbors. I can make the findings for the variance as well. I also agree with Kevin that I do think that having an arborist plan, especially for the magnificent cypress, should be a condition of approval. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alex?
All right. I come here, sort of starting in reverse order because Park Lane was kind of like the subject of the day. I do think the opportunity to move the bench a little bit uphill is going to improve the bench and the view. In any case, the view changes dramatically the lower you go on the steps. So regardless of whether this project were to be approved or not tonight, I think that's good for Park Lane. I have a hunch this project will be approved, but we'll see. Regarding the design, I think it's a good design for the site. I'm supportive of it. I'll be able to make findings in terms of the design review and the demolition permit. And I think I can just add a few words regarding Marika's thoughts on floor exceptions and variances. It's something I've thought a lot about over the years. I've actually had two different terms on the planning commission, and it's kind of interesting, the way the Belvedere code is constructed. And where I've kind of come to in my thinking about this is that we have a maximum allowed floor area as kind of a guardrail. However, there's a lot of different lot sizes and configurations in Belvedere that range from some of our, I have one of the smallest lots on the lagoon, very constrained, and then there's lots that are half an acre or larger. And so the onus is really on the applicant to demonstrate to the planning commission that a larger house is actually appropriate and in keeping with the neighborhood. I happen to think in this case, they've met that hurdle. And some of the things I look at that actually are objective criteria, they meet the setbacks, they generally meet the height with a small exception, they're good on coverage, the house is actually kind of a vertical volume, so the coverage on their somewhat large lot is actually relatively small. They don't impact the views of neighbors. So on all those counts, I think the design meets the criteria for an exception to floor area. And as I mentioned, I think the variance on the height, it's a rather minor little location that has to do with topography, the way the topography intersects with the height limits. So on all four of those fronts, I'll be able to be able to find in favor of this project.
Thank you. Justin?
I would like to thank you for a really nice proposal. It's hard not to speak to both projects at once because you can see the care and thought put into them together, to point specifically to 443 and slightly reference 441. The variation in the cladding and the materials is something I particularly appreciate, to have the opportunity to have the two homes and to create the variation between the two feels really important. So I would just like to point that out specifically to echo the approval of my fellow commissioners and to ask for the condition of approval for the additional measures for the Cypress Street.
Thank you. Don?
Yeah, thank you. And I, too, wanted to call out the applicant's responsiveness to getting a lot of input within the last 48 to 72 hours and responding fairly quickly with some answers and some creative problem solving. So thank you for that. I, too, will be able to make the findings. For me, it's the design clearly, I mean, within the context of that stretch of addresses, I don't know if you can say it, but the design seems almost modest in a way. And it's certainly subdued by some lights and understated, which we probably don't get enough of generally anyway in this world. So no problem with design. I think, for me, it comes down to the trees, first and foremost. You have the good luck or the bad luck of having a couple of properties that seem to have some of the last remaining coast oaks on that stretch of the island, whether it's by, you know, drought or changing land use or what have you. It feels like we're in a position where we really don't want to lose anymore. And so in the course of replacing trees, I would just argue that it isn't really about numbers. To my mind, you know, one coast oak probably equals about any number of dozens of crepe myrtles. So in the course of replacing it, I would also argue that might apply even when you're thinking about screening in front of the pool, open to the water. Obviously, those things like oaks and bays are not a quick solution for landscaping. They can take generations to become what they want to be. But the views that are visible through a coast live oak, I think, actually improves the expansive vistas like the one you have by creating some framing and some interruption in the view. So I would just argue to kind of play the long game on the trees, but definitely play it. I'd also be curious to hear what you have in mind for, I think we all make note that that iconic front cypress between the two properties, but it also does not look like it's going to be there forever. It does not appear to be in terribly great shape. So I'd be curious to learn at some point what you might have thoughts on for what might be next there. But with that, I'll be able to make the findings.
Thank you. So I have a different perspective on this one. I first want to say I really appreciate all of the changes that you made over the last few days after our site visits, and I can see that you're really making an effort, and I think it's great. And like Kevin said, I think you really are the sort of model in terms of what we like to see when we're working on projects like this. So I, it's interesting, because this project, I think, on its face, it does appear to be consistent with other homes in the area, and that it's large, it's modern, there's a lot of glass. But I think if you start to scratch beneath the surface a little bit, that there are certain areas that I think need more consideration to take it from a good design to an even better design that I think fits more consistently with our design review criteria. I think one of the biggest issues here is that little consideration has been given to preserving existing site conditions. So it's not just the existing landscaping, and some of those trees are 70, 80 years old, but also cut and fill. And so a certain degree of cut and fill is required to anchor the home to the hill, but there's also a certain degree required just because of the size of the home, which really drives those numbers up. I think some of these comments have already been made about the trees, and we discussed this earlier, and I appreciate that you are making an effort to save some of those coast live oaks around the pool terrace. I would love to see T-52 and T-49 saved along the side of the home. I think they're really stunning trees, and it would be just a tragedy to lose them. And I don't see why you would have to pull the house in 20 feet. I think it could be a lot less than that. And then in terms of replacement trees, we look for a two-to-one replacement ratio. So I know that you, again, have increased what you're, you have, that ratio has improved, but I would want to see instead of, if you're taking 23 out, something closer to 40 to 46 in that range, going back in. I would also want to see trees at the terrace level with the pool. We talked about this when I was there, but I think when you're sitting around the pool, it's really nice to have some shade from trees, and it's, you get a lot of wind, and I think having some trees there is going to help with the wind as well. So another issue I see here is just, I think, the excessive size, just given the very specific constraints and features of this lot. And it's a home that has been designed to maximize square footage and views, understandably, but I think it's done so at the expense of something that might be a little more conservative in terms of size and scale, but would be harmonious, I think more harmonious with the site and the landscaping that's already there. So I think you could still have something very large, but something that is better suited to the site. And I, as it stands right now, it feels sort of excessively large for what you're working with. And you might even be able to come back with a design that wouldn't require a variance. So I don't know that a lot of comments were made about the windows, but you have a lot of glass on the backside. I think this could constitute unnecessary light pollution, and we definitely do consider views from the water. So I think that scaling back the glass a little bit on the backside would really go a long way, and still, of course, preserving the views. You know, the rest of the findings, I mean, in terms of materials, I think that they're fine, and I think they certainly fit within the neighborhood. We talked about the lighting, so unfortunately, at this time, I could not make the findings for design review, the exception to floor area or the variance. But I'm in the minority tonight, so. So having said that, may I have a motion, please?
I move to adopt the resolution granting design review to construct a new single-family residence and attached garage at 443 Belvedere Avenue. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Adopt the resolution granting demolition permit to demolish the existing 4,289 square foot, single-family dwelling unit at 443 Belvedere Avenue.
Second?
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Close?
No, I can approve that. I can make the findings for demo permit, yeah.
Adopt the resolution granting a variance to exceed the 28-foot height limitation within the first 40 feet of the street line at 443 Belvedere.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
What about our conditions? We didn't talk about our conditions.
Oh.
They should be part of the motion.
Then one.
Finish this motion, and then we can go back.
Okay, we'll go back, okay.
So we just need an all opposed, because I'm a no. No on motion three.
But everyone else is.
So we're going to go back to motion one and add the conditions. And Ashley, you want to do that, or you want me to do it?
Okay, so conditions were adequate tree protection plan. You're testing my note-taking skills here. So removal of skylights, okay? You wanted to see a drawing of the.
Hogwire fence.
Okay, that's, and then, Don, did you want more coast live oak specifically?
Yes, and I, and I, and I don't know how you captured, you'll have to tell me, but I would like some sort of discussion around, if not that front cypress, then what? Future. I don't know if that's.
Sorry, what do you mean?
In a motion or not?
Sorry, what's the?
So he wants to know if something. So he wants to know if something happens to the cypress, what they're going to do.
Happens, okay. I mean.
He, he's feeling it's not in great shape and so it may eventually have to come out. So you want to explain or?
Before us, I mean, I think that we can condition an adequate tree protection plan. And unfortunately, I don't think there's anything else we can do other than condition, condition it and.
Could we though, I mean, could you condition it that if, if at a future date, this cypress tree fails, another tree of similar iconic status is replaced? I mean, so you don't just put a bush there.
They have to come back anyway.
They'll have to come back because the tree is so large anyway.
Four forty-one Belvedere Avenue.
On four forty-one. You're sitting next to me, you're getting bad habits.
So we have the street protection, removal of skylights, hogwire fence, drawing and additional coastal live oaks.
And then I have actually a question is, did, did we want to include a condition for the payment of, of, by, by the homeowners of any additional plans that have to be drawn up for part, the park lane changes? Because I do feel like a, a, a large.
I don't think we can. Can we condition that? You can condition that they have to make good on the promise for the park.
Just a point of clarification, is that part of the application or?
No, it's not.
No. No.
So they're doing it so that they can satisfy the community that when they build this new bench, that they're going to have some water view and the Golden Gate Bridge.
It is related. It is, it is related. So yes, I would add.
It's, it's, it's related so that I can make the findings.
Very much related, isn't it? Yes.
Condition on the generous offer.
On the offer to adjust the height of the park lane bench.
Well, it's. Yeah, I, I think, I think it's just to pay, to, to pay for the, the, the adjustments to the, to the design work.
Yeah. Okay. So adjustments to the design.
Can we say something like work as part of D P W?
I think it, there's a lot of nuances that need to get figured out with the payment because I think he's offered to pay for the plans adjustment. Whether or not this is going to change the cost of construction, it, it could, right? So like, I don't, so I think I, at this point, from what I've communicated with the applicant, I think it's okay to condition that he'll pay for the
Plan.
The plans adjustment and then we can go from there and work with him.
So can we add something saying that the applicant will work with D P W on the, the park lane reconfiguration and?
Yeah. And I, I think he's agreed to pay for the plans, but when it gets into construction costs, we haven't had that conversation, right? And if it's going to change the cost of construction by moving it uphill, I don't know the answer to that, but.
Then the other thing is what if they run into some problem and they can't do that?
It's, I mean, I trust him to make good on his offer. I think we can leave it out of a condition.
Yeah. He's not going anywhere.
We know where to find him.
He wants his building permit. I think you can condition it that will work with D P W.
Well, condition, okay, that, that he will work with, that the applicant will work with D P W to adjust the drawings for the park lane bench.
Yes. All right. Good.
So I move that we make all those conditions, add it to the design review motion to construct a new single-family residence and attached garage at four-four-three Belvedere.
I seconded again.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then the last resolution is for, we got through three, right? Adopt the resolution granting an exception to total floor area to allow six thousand eight square feet where four thousand eight hundred and fifty square feet is permitted at four-four-three Belvedere Avenue.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? No. Yeah.
Totally get it.
Can we just take a two-minute pause before we move on to four-four-one?
So as far as more oak trees, that can be part of the final main state plan when it comes back.
Yeah.
You know, Ashley, ask for more oak trees. It's, it's not a condition. It's already, it's always in the motion, the final landscape and everything. Because things change.
Yeah. Is it helpful to kind of quantify that for that, for the applicant? I mean, it's kind of like, I know what it looks like when you're trying versus you're not trying, I guess.
Sometimes we say we'd like to see three more trees or two more trees or just more trees. It just depends on the circumstance. So, but yeah, I mean, if you have a number, you should say, you know, I'd like to see, you know, if they can add, and sometimes they can't.
Right.
But, you know, it makes them try.
I just, you know, it's just, just my aesthetic, all those kinds of things.
The problem is, is that four-four-one, my favorite number, is yacht.
This one?
It's a yacht. It's never had a house.
Right.
So it's all full of trees. It's like, it's like.
I didn't even know it was there until.
I know. You don't even know it's there, of course.
It's kind of like now that I know it's there, it's kind of showing the proof.
It's always seemed to lose a lot like that.
You know, funny guy.
There is a line.
Okay, I'd like to open the public hearing for four-four-one Belvedere Avenue and ask for a staff report.
Thank you, Chair Johnson and members of the planning commission for your consideration this evening as an application for design review, variance, exception to total floor area and revocable license to construct a new single-family dwelling at four forty-one Belvedere Avenue. The subject property is a vacant twenty-nine thousand square foot waterfront parcel on the western side of Belvedere Island. The site contains thirty-nine trees consisting primarily of coastal live oaks and Monterey cypress. Dense foliage lines the right in front of the property as well. The project proposes to construct a four-level, six thousand fifty square foot residence with an attached three-car garage. The garage is proposed to be set back six feet, ten inches from the front property line and the residents will be set back ten feet and eighteen feet from each side yard. The project includes terraces overlooking Richardson Bay to the rear as well as a new ground level patio, deck and swimming pool. New exterior lighting and landscaping are proposed as well. From Belvedere Avenue, the proposed garage would appear twelve feet tall at street level. The project also would include frosted glass entry gate and six-foot tall wood fence. From the right elevation, the project would include a one-four foot by nine foot, three inch tall window at the third level and a nine foot by thirteen foot, six inch window on the second level. On the left side of the residence, the project proposes one-four foot by twenty-foot wide window at the entry stairwell. And facing the rear, the project would include a series of glass windows and doors in various widths and heights. Colors and materials include cement plaster and vertical wood siding, aluminum windows and doors in a black color and board form concrete at the retaining walls. New exterior lighting would include one wall sconce at the entrance, step lights along the entrance and exterior stairs, recessed ceiling lights beneath the roof overhangs and terraces, swimming pool lights and path lights along the side yard steps. These plans also currently show LED strip lights which have been removed from the project scope. A variety of new landscaping is proposed. This would include camellia, geranium and four Japanese maples in thirty-six inch boxes at the front of the property. On the right side yard, the project includes four coastal live oaks and thirty-six inch boxes, coffee berry and eight English laurel to seven feet tall on the first level terrace. And at the rear and left side yard, the project proposes three crepe myrtle, seven coastal live oaks, three strawberry trees, Mexican sage and monkey flower. As mentioned, the site contains thirty-nine existing trees. The project would preserve and protect twenty-one trees, including a fifty-four inch diameter cypress at the front of the property. Eighteen trees are proposed for removal and the architect again will discuss the revised landscape plans. The applicant requests a variance to exceed the twenty-eight foot height limitation within the first forty feet of the street line. Circled here in red, the shaded portion of the roof measures thirty-two feet tall. I won't go over the variance findings again. But staff does find that the granting of the variance will not constitute a special privilege because other residents have been granted variances to exceed the height limitation on Belvedere Island. There are some special circumstances applicable to the property as well. The steep terrain constitutes a special circumstance and constructing the residence lower into the hillside to meet the height requirements would be difficult due to the excessive grading that would be required. Due to these special circumstance, conforming to the zoning ordinance places an undue burden on the property owners. The applicant requests an exception to floor area as well, proposing a six thousand fifty square foot residence where the maximum permitted in our fifteen zone is four thousand eight hundred and fifty. Again, staff recommends the findings can be made. Primary views from adjacent properties will not be impaired as the subject property is oriented out of the adjacent neighbor's line of sight. Views from the uphill neighbors will not be impaired as well as these residents are set back over a hundred and feet, a hundred feet from the subject property at a much higher elevation. Again, the steep slope is an unusual characteristic which minimizes the impact of the greater floor area. Also, the residence is appropriate and mass Balkan character of the neighborhood, which consists of single-family dwellings between seven thousand and fourteen thousand square feet. Additionally, the project does not substantially reduce privacy from adjoining properties. The two windows on the right side facing four-twenty-five Belvedere Avenue will be screened by existing hedges along the side yard. And on the left side, the single stairwell window should not substantially reduce privacy to the adjacent property at four forty-three Belvedere Avenue. The project requests a revocable license for private improvements within the Belvedere Avenue right-of-way. These improvements include a new asphalt driveway at the street level and a new four-foot tall board form concrete retaining wall. The applicant also proposes to relocate two existing public parking spaces across the proposed garage, placing them between four forty-three and four forty-one Belvedere Avenue. A revocable license may be granted by city council when there is some benefit to the public, provided that the proposed encroachments comply with the design review requirements. Staff has received one letter regarding the proposed project. Comments centered around maintaining all existing landscaping on the right side yard to provide additional plantings and that the proposed outdoor heating and cooling units be located away from the side of the property. The project would be exempt from CEQA. And as detailed in the draft resolution, staff finds the project complies with the zoning ordinance and general plant policies and recommends the planning commission adopt the resolutions for the associated entitlements. Thank you, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff from members of the commission? Yes, please.
Can you go back to the four-foot retaining wall and the, that requires the revocable license? So how close to the road does that go? It was hard to tell from the plan.
It appears it goes right up to the street, but we can confirm what the architect.
Yeah. And does, well, I guess, well, I'll ask the architect because that to me is a, a concern. Because that condition is typically one that we don't like to, to allow for. Isn't that correct?
That's correct.
Where it goes, okay. So I'll save any more questions about that for the applicant.
Are there other questions for this, for staff? Any other questions for staff? Okay, my questions are for the applicant. So so I'd like to invite the applicant to come up and speak about their project.
Well, once again, good evening, Chair Johnson and commissioners. As you know, my name's David Thompson and I'm the architect for new residence at four-four-one Belvedere Avenue. I'd like to thank you again for your, your time and effort in reviewing these and meeting with us this weekend. I think we've covered a lot of, a lot of these issues in our discussions regarding four-four-three. So I'll try to keep within my time limit this time. And, you know, once again, after meeting with you this weekend and the various reports from planning staff and the architectural consultant, I, I think the project's been pretty well explained to, to everyone. Phil, the staff report, the architectural consultants report have accurately addressed the height variance and floor area exceptions. Just had maybe a couple little clarification on the staff report. I know it references thirty-nine trees on site. Those are the ones that show up on the survey. There are additional live oaks that are further down the hill that just way, way out of the, the building area that maybe add to that count a little bit. And, and I just want to clarify that I know there are four levels to the home, but it's, there's three that actually stack on each other because of the way that the building steps down the hill. And the last thing I wanted to mention was I, I think the report refers to the siding and fencing to be redwood. And we're proposing, what we're proposing to use is a wood called cabinet. You can see it on the, the material board. It's a F S C certified, sustainable, long-lasting, beautiful wood that really requires no maintenance. It's an FSC certified, sustainable, long-lasting, beautiful wood that really requires no maintenance. And quickly regarding your, Kevin's comment, question about the the four foot retaining wall in the right of way. So in order, because it's so steep between the edge of the pavement and the property line, which is back a distance, good distance from, from the edge of pavement, we need to create a driveway that gets from the street to the elevation of our driveway, which is more or less level with the street. So you have the steep. You have the edge of pavement. We have the property line and then we have our, our garage here. So in order to drive from here to here, we need to either build a bridge or build this retaining wall here and fill that and stick our driveway on top of it. I'm, I'm sure it's a, it's a it's a feature that's got to happen all over Belvedere on downhill sloping lots with, with a driveway that doesn't have a, a property line right at the edge of pavement. Sure. Yes. So moving on to address a few of the items that were revised since the staff report, kind of with questions that came up from, from our various meetings. So we met with DPW and the planning staff Monday, yesterday at the site to kind of flush out the existing street parking and impacts on the proposed project. And there was concern about the the parking spots directly across from the driveway, just maybe creating awkwardness coming in and out. You know, my studies with doing some civil engineering, there's adequate room to make the turns, but we decided to move the two spots directly across to add them on to the two that were down more in front of four four three. So we took away two and added two. And that's what's shown in the exhibit. The, we also removed, we had a little parking, off-street parking area we were posing to the right side of the garage that was in this, would be in, in the right of way. And after meeting out there with Ashley and Pat, and there was a nice tree that was in that area that would have to be removed. So we, we've just completely removed that feature from the project, which also would have contained a retaining wall in the, in the right of way. The other thing we, we did is we moved this retaining wall that's right here. We moved it inboard closer to the pool by like three feet to reduce some of the cut that would be required there. And I think that amounted to about a thirty-three cubic yard reduction. So we've got a net overhaul on this property of fifteen cubic yards. We revised the lighting plan to eliminate the LED strips, reduce some of the, well, we had to replace the LED strips with some recess cans, but limited quantities to what we sort of just needed for general life safety and circulation. And deleted two of the swimming pool lights as well. Clarified the heights of the landscape, little, little landscape step lightings, these elements here, they're like twenty-one inches above, above grade and they light down to light the stair that, that as you come down from the living room courtyard. Regarding the trees, we have added some trees as Ashley was commenting about in our terrace area down in here to give some screening from below and some shade and, and, and all. And, you know, the types of those trees, we, we haven't identified, but they could certainly be oaks there. And then just to clarify, we've got this large planting area that's on our terrace level that runs along here that'll create immediate privacy screening between four twenty-five and this property kind of from the get-go because they're, we're a little higher and they'll be six feet tall. So that'll be a nice screening feature. And, and as we said, we're, we're happy to add more and develop more privacy screening as, as the neighbor there feels he needs to accommodate his concerns. And, you know, just in general, because this is a vacant lot that's been a garden, you know, never had a house on it. There are, you know, a predominant number of trees on here and fortunately they're, they're, they're nestled in the what is really the buildable area of the property. So, you know, that contributes to the number of trees being, being removed. The you know, comments brought up about the construction management, having the two projects being built together. You know, they pertain, obviously, this project as well. The you know, we tried to design a building that was respected neighbors' privacy and views, which I think we achieved and considered that as well between the two projects, the four four one and four four three. Trying to keep sort of equal spacing between all the properties, which I think they all have decent setbacks between the buildings. And there'll be a nice strip of landscaping, screening between the two new buildings. And the materials, I think, are rich and, and appropriate for the site. They'll be well detailed and executed and should hold up well. We wanted long-lasting, durable materials, didn't need a lot of maintenance. And now I look forward to any questions or comments you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant? Yeah, please go ahead, Kevin.
So why don't we go back to the wall? Sure. And maybe it's, it's just a missing the elevation. So how high will it be at the point of the street?
So at, at the street, I was posing, let me see here.
And just, I mean, the reason I'm concerned about it is that we have a couple of these conditions that exist currently on Belvedere where for one reason or another, somebody was allowed to build up to the street a structure and it can be very difficult when you're trying to get down a narrow street. There's just no, I mean, this, you know, the one I'm thinking about has been clipped a few times by cars and that's kind of an odd corner. So anyways, I'm just curious what the elevation is at street.
Sure, so I was, if, if you could see this, let me see if I could blow it up here.
This is, this is the, the board formed concrete wall?
Correct, yeah.
Top of wall is one sixty point seven five, bottom of wall is one fifty-six point five, so four, four feet.
So I think it's better if you could see this, if you look yeah, right over here. So the, the, the flat area is kind of coming across there. That's basically the, the street. So you can see how steep it is
Right.
right there.
But so the retaining wall steps up, so at that, at the street, that's how high?
Like eighteen inches.
Okay.
That's kind of what I was thinking and that, you know, enough so you don't, if you, when you're backing out, you don't back onto that sloping, steeply sloped hillside.
Okay, yeah, that helps me. Since I have the mic, I wanted to ask you a couple of other questions is to go to the, the Conways who are next door, who Ashley and I were there this morning, meeting with them, they were lovely. And I know they've already expressed their comments to you and you've been great about responding to them. But tell me a little bit about Cypress Tree T eleven. We actually couldn't find it when we were on site today. We couldn't find the cypress, but why does that need to be removed?
Well, because it, it grows out, it comes out of the ground.
And grows into, towards the building?
Building, it comes out at like a forty-five degree angle and, you know, it essentially, before you even get to any real limbs or growth on, on the tree, it would hit the building wall.
And would that be the only tree along the property line that would be removed? It looks like
That's correct.
no other tree. And the only reason that's being removed is because it's, it would interfere with you physically building.
Correct.
The building.
Yeah, I mean, there'll be some, some pruning of those trees. I mean, they haven't been maintained in, in forever, but
Yeah.
yeah.
Your question was, could it?
Just could it be pruned?
Could T eleven be pruned or is it?
I don't think it can be pruned because the, the vegetation, the limbs and all start. You know, by the time that trunk hits the building and then you start having trees and stuff. So there'd be nothing there, yeah.
And then also related to their feedback was where specifically will the pool equipment and the HVAC equipment be? They were concerned about it being on the property line and
Yeah.
it was unclear.
Sure, so the pool equipment is located up on the main terrace, right? Right, if you can see, see that area right there? So it's kind of carved into that retaining wall. There's a little pool equipment closet there.
So it's closer, it's pretty far away. I mean, it's closer to four, four, three than it is to four two five.
Yes, it is. Yeah, you know, it's in an enclosed, you know, vented structure. I, I would say almost, yes, certainly they would not hear any. I mean, I think their pool equipment is closer to us than we are to them.
Sounds good, although they're not the applicant, so.
Yeah, I understand.
Just to be fair. And then I think we, you've already committed to address any of their concerns in terms of screening with a landscaping plan that you both can agree to and will condition that, I'm sure. But another question, because I think it's, it's only fair to them to go on public record is to why can't the garage be twenty-eight feet? So their preference would be for you to deliver the project within code. And so just help educate us and them as to, you know, what would be the consequences of bringing the house in at twenty-eight feet?
Sure.
The garage, the garage in particular, because that's the only piece of the structure that's above.
Right, so it's, it's this, this section, you know, right here. So, you know, it goes back to the steepness of the site and that you drop so much from the you know, street to the back of the garage that it, you know, it, it makes that downhill corner high. You know, we started with, well, kind of having a a reasonable setback from the property line to the face of the garage, just to allow for egress and ingress. And then you have a twenty-two foot deep garage and that sets the downhill corner. And then, you know, you've got this very steep, almost seventy percent slope lot there in that. So the grade is where it's at, at that downhill corner. Now we have a ten-foot ceiling in the garage. Obviously, that, you know, could be made lower, that would lower that corner a little bit. To get it, I think it's pushing three feet above twenty-six, pushing thirty-one, thirty-one feet.
And wasn't the ceiling, it's two with, it's ten with two on top of it?
Yes, yes, because you've, you've got a foot of structure and then roughly a foot of small minimal parapet curb and sloping for drainage and all. So, yeah, you know, maybe there's inches in there that you could tighten that up some.
Okay.
And, you know, I guess, and then part of that structure comes into our entryway, which I guess ultimately we're a little more concerned about
Right.
that than
Right, the garage itself.
ceiling height in the garage.
Yeah, it might require more aggressive screening or more like a tree or something to, to reduce or to give the scale of the garage and that wall
Yeah.
a better feel from the property.
One thing I should, should note, I think I might have mentioned that to you when we, we met, that the, the flag light, the flags that connect those two downhill story poles, they do it's kind of run up like that
It's misleading, yeah.
because of that tree that was in there. So, I mean, I haven't viewed it from their property, so I'm, you know, speaking without having a visual on it, but I don't know what, you know, what portion of they were seeing that anyway, but.
Okay. I had the same comment about the skylights. I have the same issue with the skylights and so I, I don't know if you want to fall on your sword now or later.
No, I mean, I guess the one that I would ask about is the one that's on, that's behind sort of the garage entryway wall that's right here. That's, you know, basically sheltered by the garage wall here that extends, I don't know, eight or nine feet up above it. You know, to me, that, that doesn't, I don't think anybody's going to be affected by light that comes out of that. So I would just put that out there as maybe that could be considered a little differently than, than the other ones.
Okay.
Which, you know, we're happy to
Sure.
delete those.
And then the last thing is just the trees, the oaks. I think you're if I have the numbers right, if we're thinking about just this property, it would be eighteen removed and twenty-four added. If you, I was using your total you gave us for both properties, twenty-three and thirty-eight. And if you deduct what you told us about four four three, that's what's left. So eighteen removed and it looks like fifteen of those are oaks. And so, I mean, without repeating what we've all said about oaks and how much we love them.
Well, I think, you know, we're, we're happy to, to plant back more oaks and less other types of trees. I think there's you know, because the oaks need, you can't plant as much stuff under them and around them, you know. It starts to limit the quantities maybe of trees that we can add. But, you know, if we're comfortable with having less trees and more oaks, we can certainly move in that direction.
Thank you.
Other questions for the applicant?
So I have a question on this new revocable license drawing exhibit. So the detail that I'm seeing here, it's not super clear to me. And I'm afraid that when it goes to city council, that'll be super unclear to them. In, you say you're removing two parking spaces and you're adding four. At least that's what I read. And so I, I, I'm, you're you don't have it detailed exactly where the four additional spots go. I mean, I see that you have, you know, new street parking and it'll be, you know, striped and all this stuff. But I think it would be better if you would for city council, show the existing parking, because I believe there's an existing parking there now, and then show the four parking spaces. Because it's, it's, I don't know, to me, this visually just doesn't look like four parking spaces.
I, I think there's maybe some confusion there. Is, is that the description where it says we're?
But was in?
I think it was two for two.
Yeah, it did, it, it, it did evolve after our meeting yesterday.
Okay, because this is from you. It says, we met with DPW, we greet Okay, because this is from you. It says, we met with DPW, we agreed to remove two street parking. And, and increase the street parking between four, four, three and four, four, one from two spaces to, oh, so you're just adding two.
Yes, we're extending.
I'm going to continue to say I would have it more clearly specified when this goes to city council to actually show like it's two spots. So it's like really crystal clear to them.
Certainly, yes, I will.
Cause I think they'll question you on, on the drawing. And I think I wouldn't say you're going from two to four because I misread what you were saying. So I think it would just be better to say you're replacing the two you're removing.
Understood. Thanks.
I don't think that they're asking for the parking and the revocable license. They're just, at least that's my understanding is that it's, they're removing two city spaces and there's going to be two spaces on the street, but they don't want that in their revocable license exhibit. I mean, that's still part, that's public parking. They're taking two public parking spaces away and paint, and the city is going to paint two new spots.
I guess I got confused between the original revocable license where they were adding asphalt in order to put in the parking.
Yes.
And so where they're moving it, they don't have to add the asphalt. Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay.
And it won't be part of the revocable license that goes to council. I think it's just for information purposes here. Right. It's not part of the RL.
Should I take that off the exhibit?
Yes, the shading of that new street parking.
Yeah. And the showing where I'm removing?
No, I think you can just leave it there. So they, we'll talk about that.
Does that need to be a condition of approval?
I think we need to incorporate the new exhibit submitted today into the
But it's public, it's public property, which doesn't have anything to do with this project. So I don't think we can condition. Like moving the two spots from one place to another is?
But at their request. So I just want to make sure that it gets replaced.
And condition it that those spots get removed.
Replaced. Yeah, I don't, okay, okay. Pat, did you have other questions about the RL?
No.
Can I, since we're on the RL? So I, can you just clarify for me, what is on the left of that eighteen inch wall? If I'm standing on the street, if I'm standing on the right of it, if I'm standing there and I'm looking over, what's on, what's on the other side?
Existing, existing hill, yes.
Okay. I just, my understanding is that the city generally doesn't like to see walls and fences. And to Kevin's point, I would have just a concern about cars coming around that corner. Does it create the illusion too of private property if there's a wall sticking out in the street there? It just is a little bit odd the way it's been. Does it need it? Does it need that wall there?
Well, yeah, if you're pulling out of the driveway and you don't have a guardrail, well, one, the code requires anytime you've got a vertical drop more than thirty inches from a surface to another surface, you need a guardrail. So for a portion of that, we need a guardrail for code. And then once you get to where the sloping grade is less than thirty inches, I continued that wall more as a safety feature. So if you're pulling out or pulling into the driveway, you don't back over the driveway into the hill.
We do have a finding in our revocable license application and exhibit for retaining walls and it's letter D. And it states where the public right of way will be used to construct retaining walls, drainage structures or other facilities that the city considers necessary to protect or maintain the public infrastructure. So if that find, if the street is the public infrastructure that we're protecting and that finding can be made for the retaining wall, then that's at your.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yeah, please.
I'm slightly curious how it terminates at the street edge that it does feel, at least in the drawing, that it would be, is it eighteen inches that basically just pops up right at the edge of the street there is, if there was any, like I can't picture whether it would look odd if I'm looking at it standing at the street and you see just.
Right, right. I mean, you know, maybe it should slope down to be more like a curb height at the, at the, when it meets the, the street.
It sounds maybe even more difficult to maintain the building code if it was sloped down to have the guardrail there. But in, I'm not sure I have a suggestion, but I am like curious if there is an approach that doesn't have the isolated element, I suppose, almost, you know, if there, almost feels like I'm, if I'm walking the dog, might be a trip hazard kind of a situation. Not that that's a big concern in my mind, but picturing like walking at night with like only an eighteen inch curb popping up, something that might happen.
Sure. I, I'm sure there's a, I think you need like a little something there that at least if your car will hit it, you, you know, so curb height would be totally fine. And there's probably a little rolled edge on the, the edge of the asphalt street that would die into it.
That makes sense.
Okay.
Just a last, my last question on the RL. So in the, in the drawings, it looks like that additional paving area is matching the driveway. I just want to clarify that the additional portion that's being added to the street is going to match the street.
Yes, I think it's called out there as asphalt to match the street.
Okay. Cause in the drawing, it looks like different material. So I just wanted to.
Oh, I think I just shaded it so that you can see the area that is in the right of way.
And where it meets the property line is when it changes to the concrete pavement. Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Other questions for the applicant?
Just one, how wet are you to the artificial turf?
Well, I think that that was a request of my client. So I would have to consult with him about that.
It's more of a, just a style question that is that it, just looking at the renderings, I'm, in my own head, I'm seeing native grasses fitting better than artificial.
Well, yeah, I guess the thinking was at least that that is a, you know, potential little, you know, play sitting area or whatever. Whereas the native grasses are a little more unaccommodating for that type of use.
Are there any other questions for the applicant?
I have a, I have a question and I can't find it now, but when I was looking at the plans earlier, there was something about a fountain. Is there a wall fountain that's?
No, there's not. There was, I know at one time I had a, a note for myself that was straggling on one of the plans. It was just a thought, but no, there's no wall fountain proposed. Yes, there is a fire pit down in the lower terrace.
Okay. Are there any other questions for the applicant? None. Okay. Are there any questions or comments from members of the public? Do we have anyone on Zoom? Okay. Okay. Thank you. So we will close public comment and I will now bring it back to the commission for discussion. Alex, would you like to start us off?
Sure. Thank you. I visited this site as well and reviewed the plans. I, I think it's a thoughtful design for the site. I, on the, on the topic of the variance for the height, I'm, I'm receptive to it. I think because of the topography of the site, the appearance of the garage from the street level is really only approximately half of what it could be if it were a flat site. So the additional mass is really effectively below public view. So I can, I can find in favor of the variance. I can find in favor of design review. Exception to total floor area, I feel, I know we're not mixing and matching the two projects, but I feel similar to the way I did on the adjacent property. It's a large site. It's a, you know, it's generally respectful of all the zoning guidelines. So I think it meets that criteria for me. And I'm also good with the revocable license. So I can make the findings for the project.
Thank you. Pat?
Thank you. I also visited the site with the applicant or applicants and the architect. I think it's a well-thought-out design, as Commissioner Seidel just said. I think it fits into the neighborhood. I think because of the slope, the challenges at certain points force the design to exceed the height limitation. I can also make the findings for the variance, the exception to total floor area and the revocable license. As far as the design review, I would like a condition added to the, for the final landscaping that the applicant work with the owners at four, two, five Belvedere regarding the screening on that terrace. And and I'd like the lighting to be looked at in the final landscape and lighting review by the chair and staff. But otherwise I think it's very well thought out. I actually again, met with Mr. Conway this afternoon. And I explained to him a little bit about the garage, why, you know, it seemed so tall versus what it looks like from the street is because of the slope. And once we got into that discussion, he understood why it went to the thirty-two feet and he seemed to be fine with that. So I think that this is very well thought out and will be a lovely addition to the city.
Thank you. Kevin?
Thank you. You were also a model applicant on this project too. Which is nice. So thank you for that. And again, we appreciate how responsive and receptive you've been to input along the way. I can make the findings for the revocable license. I do think having that at a curb height would be helpful. So that's a great suggestion. Also can make the findings for the exact, exception to total flora. Same rationale as four, four, three. Also for the variance for the height. I can make the findings with, for design review as well, though I would offer the following conditions. I mean, like Pat, I would agree to condition it on fully resolving any concerns the Conways have regarding privacy. Not just at the terrace going all the way up to the garage, but I know that you're both open to doing that. I would ask that you remove the top skylight. If you want to keep the, the lower one, I think that is shielded more from the upward neighbors at, I can't remember, four, three, five Golden Gate. There's a couple of houses up there that can see down onto the top of that house. The, and then just in terms of trees, I mean, a preference for adding back more oaks as appropriate. Certainly as you continue to work through the final landscaping plan. But again, I think it's a great project, just like four, four, three, and, and I'm excited for you.
Thank you. Don?
Yeah. Thank you. I had nothing much to add that hasn't been said already. You know, this particular lot requires probably more imagination than a lot of the other projects, just simply because there's nothing there. And that's a fairly rare commodity in Belvedere. In fact, it's, to be honest, you know, I walk by the lot every day with my animal and they, I didn't even know it was a building site until this week. And in a way that presents kind of a, maybe a little extra obligation to preserve some of the, the wildness that's there in the feel of it. I, this calls back again to the planting more of the native trees. Obviously the, you know, more trees are going to have to come down, obviously, because you're building a new structure and it, and it's pretty dense at the moment. But I would, you know, in a way you can, there's an opportunity here to do something with the two properties that maybe is a little bit different and more noble almost than maybe some of the other houses on the street have tried to accomplish. And that's to preserve as much of the original feel of the site as possible. So with that, I can certainly make the findings.
Thank you. Justin?
Thank you for a wonderful proposal and the application is beautiful, just as the building next to it. I can make the findings for all four motions. A one condition, I think, for the revocable license, I'm curious about a condition being an adjustment or some revision to make the edge condition of that retaining wall that meets the street be slightly better resolved. Aside from that, I can make the findings.
Thank you. Jenna?
Hi. Thank you. Thank, thank you. Thank you again. And, and I, I echoed Donna saying that, you know, a, a, a building lot with that view is indeed a unique, you know, a unique asset for, for, for our community. I think it's going to make somewhat a fantastic home. I can make the findings for the, for the, for the variance, like with the house next door. I think that the additional height is warranted by the special circumstance of the slope. And I do note that it is only about two inches taller than what, than what is, the one that's currently, currently permitted, whereas the slope is, is pretty, pretty steep. I can also make the findings for the, for the design review. I also want to add the condition that the, that the, the screening be worked out with the neighbor at four, twenty, at four, twenty, four, twenty-five Belvedere, Belvedere. And with, with, with respect to the floor area, area exception, I could also find the, I could also make the findings for the same reason as the, as the house next door, the steep slope. And I, I appreciate the fact that you have used, I'll say it's sort of the Lego mentality of stack, of stacking, stacking the masses as it, as it goes down the hill. I think it looks lovely. And while I know that the ADU and the JADU are not before us, I also appreciate the fact that you incorporated having an ADU and a JADU in your, in your, in your plans as they, as they add to our, to our overall total number of housing units. With respect to the revocable license, I defer to my, to my fellow commissioners who have a more technical background, background than I do in term, in terms of the appropriate qualifications for the edge of the, of the, of the, of the retaining wall. And I also, oh yes, and I, and I also want to highlight that the changes that you've made in order to, to retain more, more trees has also been appreciated. So thank you very much.
Great. Thank you so much. So I am of a similar mind on this project as I am for four, four, three. There are a lot of similarities between the sites and the homes. So I, I echo my comments about existing site conditions and minimizing cut and fill and preserving existing landscape in its natural state. Cut and fill has been an ongoing issue in the community and much of the focus of conversation has been about how much material is being hauled offsite. And that is a downstream effect of cut and fill, but there is no specific requirement. And that is a downstream effect of cut and fill, but there is no specific requirement around off haul and it's not a finding that we need to make. So in the absence of a standard or a metric to, to measure cut and fill against and to measure off haul against, we have to really just use our best judgment based on the site and the specifics of the site and the project. And I have to look at the data in front of me. Cut and fill is one data point. But another data point is that it's a very large project on a steep lot and the exception to floor area request is well in excess of the standard. So this information taken altogether gives me pause and it makes it much harder for me to make the design review findings around preserving existing site conditions and minimizing bulk and mass. Again, I think a more conservative approach would require less cut and fill and would allow you to preserve a lot more of that beautiful landscaping that's already there. And again, I'm not, I'm not against large homes and I think in the right setting and context, exceptions to floor area are appropriate. I just can't make the findings for it in this instance. A, a lot of comments have been made about the landscaping, but I just echo what's been said. I think that you need additional screening between this property and 425 Belvedere. And I also feel the same way about the, the amount of glass here. Again, I understand that you want to optimize views, but we do consider views from the water. And I think that even just a little reduction on the backside would go a long way. So at this time, I cannot make the findings. I can make the findings for the revocable license with an adjustment to the curb height. Okay, so may I have a motion, please?
I move to adopt the resolution granting design review for a new single family residence and attached garage at 441 Belvedere Avenue conditioned with, and again, I think we might need to massage the words, but full resolution of the privacy issues raised by the neighbor at 425 Belvedere Avenue, removal of the upper skylight, addition of oaks, oak trees. And then how, what was your specifically about lighting? So.
Just review in the final landscape.
Review of the, the lighting and final landscaping plan. Was there anything else that I didn't catch?
Commissioner Burke, perhaps the extensive tree protection plan for the Cypress.
Thank you. Same as what we did for 443. Yeah, thank you.
This has the Cypress.
This has a Cypress, but I think for all trees. I mean, I was, in 443, we said for all trees.
But, but also since, but I think that the Cypress we need to have for both because of the construction laid out area. Well, whether, I mean, whether the construction is for 443 or 441, the construction laid out area, I think, is anticipated to be between the two dwellings. So we want to make sure, yeah.
I think we would just have a blanket statement of a tree protection plan for all the trees that are remaining.
And it remains throughout the course of construction on both properties.
One for each property.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay. So that's the motion.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
No.
Second motion is to adopt the resolution granting a variance to exceed the 28 foot height limitation within the first 40 feet of the street line at 441 Belvedere Avenue.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move to adopt the resolution granting an exception to total floor area to allow 6,050 square feet where 4,850 square feet is permitted at 441 Belvedere Avenue.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
And move to recommend to the city council approval of a revocable license for improvements located in the public street right of way at 441 Belvedere Avenue with the condition that the retaining wall that terminates at the street be at curb height.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, congratulations. I now adjourn the meeting. Thank you.